That gonna work?
Good morning.
Oh, we got mustaches, huh?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Hey, this is 'cause you guys didn't do it.
It's a good thing you told me ahead of time, because I did have a lot to say.
Good morning, how are you, S.T.?
Nothing. I just couldn't do it at any time. Oh.
How would I look, Pete?
Good morning.
(laughing). I just gotta look at your high school yearbook to see.
Yeah.
Did he have a mustache?
He looked like a bandito.
I'm sure he did.
I was Mr. Clean Cut in high school.
Clean Cut.
He even knew how poor I was, so it was, it was a good deal. Phil's not here.
No.
He's in Boise, Idaho.
On purpose?
Crazy to have this chair empty right next to me there, Mike.
I'm still trying to figure out who I'm gonna have sitting next to me.
Yeah, he's sixty votes.
Yep.
I know one thing.
That was amazing.
Hey, I know one thing, Pete, he won't be Japanese.
(laughing). He's about to trim, he'll overtake him.
Yep. Japanese half-Mexican.
Well, he'd fit right in. Here we go.
All ready?
Good morning and welcome to the Board of Supervisors. Today we'll be sitting as the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and also as the Tulare County Flood Control District. So, please join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Well, last week we were contemplating the election. And we do have a new president. And, uh, I'm pretty excited about it myself. Some people may not, but I voted for him and, uh, I felt like all along that he would win out in the end, so. However you feel, we have to pull together and hopefully make this a much stronger nation than we ever have been in the past, so. God willing, that will happen. Okay, let's start out with Supervisor Matters. Uh, Supervisor, I guess that's Pete Vanderpoel over there, boy, he's really getting himself a growth going there.
(laughing). Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. I thought you were gonna be saying that America will be great again, so nice to hear you divert from that in your political dialogue to start the morning off. A few local things that I wanted to go over, um, that tonight at the PPAV Hall in Visalia, uh, there will be a meeting that is hosted by Sam Shaka and Moody Walnut Dehydrator. There, there's been an issue, we have a county walnut theft ordinance and that has served us very well. Um, however, there are, I mean, maybe some loopholes that, uh, individuals have found and they're figuring out a way to basically steal walnuts and get cash for them. Um, so there is, I think there's an opportunity for the county in collaboration with our various departments to come up with ways to tighten up that loophole. And that's what this meeting is about tonight. Various electeds and, uh, departments have been invited to the meeting to bring forth their ideas and to hear, uh, of the concerns. Um, also tonight, there's an important Tulare City Council meeting where they will be selecting an alternative to move forward on the South-Tulare interchange. Uh, hopefully the council will make the decision to, uh, move forward, uh, to begin the environmental process. Caltrans has been very gracious to allow, uh, the council to move forward, um, and seek a design exception concurrently while moving forward with the environmental process. And that's something that Caltrans really never does. You have to have design exceptions granted prior to beginning environmental. Um, so I think that's a very positive step for, um, that interchange project moving forward in order to, uh, limit the impacts that are, uh, had to existing businesses in Tulare. This Wednesday, there is, uh, a ribbon-cutting event for Central Valley Recovery Services at noon at their new facility. Um, also on Wednesday, Chipotle in Tulare from the hours, I believe it's from four to eight o'clock. Uh, anybody that goes to Chipotle and mentions the Lighthouse Rescue Mission fundraiser, uh, fifty percent of all proceeds will go to, uh, raise money for the Lighthouse Rescue Mission. So, if you like Chipotle and you like fundraisers, uh, and you wanna support a great cause, please go to the Chipotle in Tulare, uh, to help raise money for the Lighthouse Rescue Mission. Uh, I know I will be, um, but I won't tell you what time I'm gonna go, 'cause I'm hoping the line's not gonna be too long. Then, let's see, um, Pixley is having an exciting event on Wednesday at ten o'clock. Um, they're going to be having their Pixley Community Campus ribbon-cutting. Uh, CSET has been a wonderful partner along with the Pixley Foundation, uh, as well as the library, uh, in order to make that event possible. And it's really gonna be a, a great community center for the residents in Pixley. And I look forward to having everything kinda consolidated and located at one, uh, facility or one location. We also have, uh, Space Planning Committee meeting this week. We're gonna be talking about the property and evidence facility. Um, we have some, hopefully, uh, I think we're getting bid results, uh, this week. And, uh, so hopefully that'll turn out a little bit better than our last, uh, bid result. But, uh, our last bid result came in a little bit higher. Uh, however, we're still gonna be getting, uh, a great project done for significantly less than what it was originally scoped to be prior to the creation of the ad hoc committee, uh, that Supervisor Cox and myself serve on. Um, there are various community Thanksgiving dinners. Uh, I know that, uh, both Early Mart and Pixley will be having their respective Thanksgiving dinners. In Early Mart, the Dia de Gracias event, uh, and then in Pixley, it's a community Thanksgiving dinner. Um, and then also, uh, wanted to let people know that in Tulare, uh, the Tulare Amvets is putting on a free Thanksgiving dinner, uh, from eleven to two. I encourage everyone to attend. I know that, uh, last year they served seven hundred people and I think they're shooting for over a thousand this year. Um, I'm, I'm pretty sure that event's on Wednesday, but it might be on Thanksgiving, so that's next week. And the reason I'm going over next week's stuff is because we don't have a board meeting. And then the last thing that I, I, I wanted to talk about is I really wanna give some direction to our CAO. Um, you know, it's, it's a, it's a good thing to have, uh, we've realized some significant cost savings by having a consolidated department, uh, in the, uh, under one elected official, the auditor, treasurer, tax collector, registrar of voters. Um, however, it became evident that there's a lot more that goes on in the, uh, elections registrar of voters, uh, world than I think, uh, what we really realize. Um, and I know there were many issues last week during the election. I, I know that Rita is very committed to make sure that every vote counts. But I want our CAO to look into, uh, what it would look like to create an elections department or registrar of voters department separate and apart from the auditor, uh, controller to relieve her of that responsibility. Um, look into that and see what it's gonna take to make that function, uh, even more, um, and, and really kinda relieve her of that duty. She has a lot going on, on her plate. I think that it would be good to have it be its own department in a standalone basis, uh, so that it's, uh, you know, a little bit more, I, I don't wanna say accountable, because, uh, it is accountable to her, um, but I think it's, it becomes, uh, a little bit easier to monitor when it's directly under the CAO, so. I would just ask, make that request and hopefully we can get something, uh, underway to look at that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor.
I, I think my colleague took up his time and Mr., uh...
Yeah, there's a lot going on.
My absent member here as well. Um, I just wanted to say, last week, um, I had the opportunity to go to Fresno Chamber of Commerce. They were honoring Emmanuel Cunha as the Agriculturalist of the Year. Emmanuel Cunha, I've gotten to know quite well through the Air District and various, uh, agricultural issues. He's the president of the Nise Farmers League and a very active individual, if you know Emmanuel. And from there, I went to Sacramento, um, to, uh, a water commission meeting the following morning. Uh, we were there specifically, I was there as the president of the JPA, the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority, uh, to try to have some impact on the regula, regulations which the commission is now in the process of adopting. Essentially, they're requesting, uh, requiring, uh, an analysis that be done on these projects. Of course, we're involved and, and interested in the Temperance Flat Project, uh, that requires them doing an economic analysis on water values in twenty thirty and twenty seventy. Now, what the heck does that mean? Because who knows what tomorrow's gonna be, much less twenty thirty and twenty seventy. Uh, unfortunately, they, they didn't see the wisdom of that, so they're gonna continue what looks like with that obligation. Now, what that means to us is, as we look at raising the funds to complete the application process, that it could mean another two to four hundred thousand dollars of cost, uh, to do this analysis. And unfortunately, we're gonna be obligated to do that if we're gonna have a application that will, uh, be viewed favorably by the Water Commission. Uh, Saturday, we had a nice Veterans Day, uh, as they always have, ceremony at Smith Mountain Cemetery. I was able to be there and present a proclamation on behalf of the board, it was always very well attended. And, um, this week, uh, we, as a consequence of, of that, uh, meeting that we had, the, the Water Commission meeting, there'll be a meeting in Sacramento. I will be, I will be available by phone, uh, with the Bureau of Reclamation. We're hoping them, to get them to step up perhaps and help fund some of those initial studies. Uh, they've already spent thirty-five, the federal government's spent thirty-five million dollars studying this project, so we're hopeful they will see fit to continue to help fund this aspect of it, so we won't have to go out and raise those, those extra dollars. And then finally, I have an air board meeting this coming Thursday in Fresno, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Shida.
I wanna touch on the election. I share Chairman Ennis' sentiments about the national election. It gives us hope that the fact that we may get, finally get water deliveries through the Delta. And the other issue that's extremely important to the valley is we may get some relief from EPA and the air, uh, quality restrictions that, uh, are facing us. On the local level, uh, I also share Supervisor Vanderpoel's position on the elections office. I think a lot of people do not understand how complicated, uh, elections have become, especially since most, a lot of the cities have gone to districts. And all the different districts that are scattered and overlap, uh, other jurisdictions. It's not just the fact that you get a ballot and you go vote, is all the ballots are different depending on what district you are, what's on, uh, what's on the schedule, uh, for the election. Um, I was disappointed in the fact that District One in Lindsay ran out of ballots. Uh, hopefully that will not affect the outcome of my replacement, which at this point in time is, uh, up in the air, who will be sitting in this chair after the first of the year. Some of the bright, uh, back to the national election. I heard a rumor on the, uh, radio yesterday that, uh, Representative Devin Nunes was being considered for the Secretary of Agriculture. It's a very prestigious position, but in my opinion, I really appreciate Devin, uh, in the position that he is representing us. I think he is in a power position that I hate to see, uh, him give up. But that's his decision and maybe the rumor's completely untrue.
He's on the transition team.
Yes, he is. A sign of hope, President of State has a new football coach.
(laughing).
That's a real sign of hope for us alumnis, especially who had season tickets for over twenty years. And Jeff Teford, Coach Teford, be coming back to Fresno State, uh, which I think is gonna be very helpful for recruitment. And when you're one and nine for the season, anything would be an improvement.
Almost.
Right now, we had our last Water Commission meeting, well, not the last one, but the last one I, I will chair. And for the next month and a half, I'll be going to a lot of meetings, uh, for the final time as a supervisor. And we have an RCRC meeting coming up, a CSAC meeting, and a Sierra Nevada Conservancy meeting. And it's been a pleasure to serve, uh, representing Tulare County in all those. And, uh, it's kinda different when you're on your way out and you say, it's been a pleasure working with you and I've met so many fine people, uh, throughout the state of California. But as a short timer, you just kinda look at things and reflect back on your tenure as a supervisor. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I correct myself? I announced an event that, and I was corrected, um, the event is actually of the Pixley, uh, Community Center grand opening. It's not on Wednesday, it is on Thursday at ten AM, uh, at the new location. And I do also have to say, um, UCLA is doing better than one and nine, Supervisor Shida.
They need new coach.
However, however, UCLA does play USC this weekend, and all I have to say is go Bruins.
Well, I've gotta say, uh, Washington got knocked out of number four because of USC.
Yeah?
Yeah. They've, they've improved, uh, of course, you knew who I'll be pulling for, uh, USC.
(laughing).
Okay. Thanks for all those great comments, guys. You come up with a bunch, especially Pete. I thought he was gonna run the floor this morning.
(laughing).
I just wanna thank Tulare County Fire and Chief Norman and his personnel for bringing Parade One over to Porterville for me last Friday, uh, for the parade. Gosh, it was great. I always get a lot of comments on that fire truck. And when you tell people that it's the people inside the fire department that actually put this truck together and made it what it is today. And every time you look at it, it just keeps getting better, so what a, what a fantastic truck and enjoyed myself very much. Uh, like I tell people, when you're riding up there on that fire truck, guys have a pretty good arm to get you with a tomato. So, I mean, it was, it was, it was great. Uh, also went to the, uh, Veterans Tea afterwards and met a lot of, uh, Korean War veterans and a lot of veterans from around, we have a lot of veterans over in the Porterville area and it was good to be there and socialize with them. This Friday, I'll be going to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, banquet awards and, uh, giving out certificates for all the different, uh, big business, small business, man of the year, woman of the year, youth of the year. A lot of good, uh, a lot of good things at that, uh, meeting. So, that's all I have this morning, and with that, we will move to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak to the board on matters concerning the board but not on the agenda, may do so at this time. Seeing no one, we will close the public comment and go to our untimed items. Let's go to, oh, wait a minute, let's go ahead and do a consent calendar.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item number four just for a question of our, uh, auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, registrar of voters.
Okay, you wanna do that first before we proceed?
Yeah, I just wanna ask the question. I know that, um, I was looking through the names and, um, I know we're appointing in lieu of, uh, election. Um, but I know in the Tulare Memorial District, one of the names listed, uh, happened to pass away, uh, this last year. Um, and he was, he was really a pillar in the community, but I, I'm not sure how we proceed, um, with the appointments in lieu, uh, given, uh, the passing of, uh, one of the directors he's supposed to be appointed.
Excuse me, um, I'll answer that question.
Okay.
Because our office is the one that puts those appointments on the agenda, so we'll just remove that name off of the agenda.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanted to make, make sure of that, and, uh, that, that was the one question I had, uh, and thank you, Rita, for walking all the way up here so that she didn't have to, uh, didn't get to talk about that one, but. Okay, so I will, uh, make the motion to approve the consent calendar unless the, uh, corrected name, uh, on, uh, the appointments in lieu.
Okay, great.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpoel, second by Supervisor Worthy, cast your votes. Vote is four oh, unanimous without Supervisor Cox being here. Okay, now we will move to item number twenty-four, uh, in our untimed items. Accept the grant funding and amend the position allocating listing.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Spata. Um, it's always a pleasure to be here. I would be remiss if I did not add, uh, to Supervisor Vanderpoel's comments and congratulate him on being a marvelous, uh, master of ceremonies on Friday night. Someone impromptu, but a wonderful job. Had a great night. Sorry I had to leave early, but we had an early, an early Saturday morning, so it was a good night, thanks to you. It's my pleasure to be here today and ask for, um, uh, the board to approve acceptance of a grant and also add a criminal investigator to our position allocation to continue, uh, what I say is the natural evolution of our fight, uh, against human trafficking. Uh, as this board is keenly aware, several years ago, we made a commitment together, uh, to enter, uh, down this journey. Uh, we received, uh, a grant a few years ago, uh, and added a victim advocate. Since that time, uh, as our agenda item reflects, we've, uh, already provided services to, uh, thirty or forty victims. Um, I don't think anybody in the district attorney's office or, or, or law enforcement, police, um, communities would have anticipated in such a short time since creation of our human trafficking task force, which was in two thousand and fourteen, uh, we would be where we are today with the volume, uh, of cases and defendants that not only have we, the district attorney, filed upon, uh, but the sheriff's department is continuing to investigate as well as Porterville, Tulare, and the Visalia Police Department. Uh, so this is, uh, in essence, a natural evolution of that. Uh, it is, uh, grant funding, it is a hundred percent, uh, no net county cost. Uh, as with, uh, all things, uh, in conjunction with, uh, my discussions with our CAO, uh, if the funding does not continue, uh, unless we and the department can come up with, uh, other alternatives, um, the position will go away. We're not committing, uh, the board into any long-term obligation that cannot otherwise, uh, be sustainably funded. Uh, but in the short time, uh, just spoke Saturday on this issue, in the short time we've been doing this, we already have a dozen defendants, uh, in the system. We've already put two, uh, traffickers in prison for, uh, I think, ten years, one individual, the other individual, uh, over nine years. So, it's a successful task force. It's successful because of your commitment to us and the partnership with law enforcement. And I think this grant is the next evolution, uh, in that. So, with that, I'll answer any questions and ask you to allow us to accept the grant and add our position. Supervisor Vanderpoel.
So hopefully with, uh, Proposition Fifty-seven passing, these human traffickers will stay behind bars, uh, that you're putting there. Would you just give a brief comment on that?
Yeah, the, the tragic reality is, unless there are, uh, other, um, special circumstances with the crime type, a, uh, individual that, um, is convicted of human trafficking of a minor, such as these two individuals we, uh, spoke of, um, according to the governor's language, um, they do not consider that to be a non-violent felony, a non-violent felony, excuse me. Um, as you know, uh, I am appalled by that and, uh, tried, uh, to the best of our abilities to get the word out for that. But, um, the reality is, uh, Supervisor, those would be eligible for, uh, early release consideration by our governor and by Prop Fifty-seven.
Just, just one quick comment, uh, the, uh, your, your statement, Tim, about not costing the county anything, uh, there is an in-kind match of two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, so.
That's true, yes.
Uh, and the in-kind match is, um, met out of your existing budget, so there's no additional budgetary expense. But, uh, there is that, there is that expense, obviously, that the county does incur to, to, to access these.
You're absolutely correct. A, a proper way of saying that, no additional net county cost, so I'm not asking for any additional funding.
And, and to follow up on something that, that was just said by Supervisor Vanderpoel about what is a non-serious or non-violent felony? Grand auto theft is not a, a non-serious felony either. And we have a, we have a, a sheriff sergeant who was executed in the pursuit of, uh, you know, looking into actually a theft of an automobile. He was there waiting for backup when somebody came up to him and executed him. And this is what happens, uh, you know, it's not, it's not the stealing of the automobile, it's the reaction of people in the theft of the automobile.
Right.
To keep themselves from going to jail or being incarcerated or being prosecuted will do serious things. And that's exactly what happened there. Um, I, I, I just, it's reprehensible. I mean, the, the, the way that law officers are being targeted for execution in this country is just, uh, unbelievable. And so, uh, obviously, we wanna stand with your department and with all of our elected, all of our, the sheriff and all the police departments and so forth in our county. And thank God, to this point, we have not had that kind of activity in this county. But, um, there is a sense, I believe, that hopefully this election will may have helped to correct, that, that, uh, people who are unhappy about certain things feel justified in their, in their conduct, which is not, not acceptable in civilized society.
Well, I think the movement of the sheriff, DA, and everybody, not only talking the talk, but walking the walk and making things happen is why you got this grant.
Thank you, sir.
And it was a competitive grant, congratulations to you, and I move approval.
Very much so.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Worthy, second by Supervisor Shida, cast your votes. Vote unanimous with Phil Cox being absent. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item number twenty-five. Approve an addition of the sheriff's deputy two to the sheriff's position allocation. Thank you.
Morning. Morning, how are you doing? Captain John Gonzalez, uh, in behalf of, uh, Sheriff Mike Boudreaux. Um, basically, just wanna emphasize what, uh, District Attorney, uh, Tim Ward said. Uh, basically, this is adding to ours, to our department regarding the grant and basically to open a position, uh, and it costs no cost to the county except for, you know, operational costs and stuff like that. So, with your approval, we, uh, we can continue our fight against human trafficking as, uh, the sheriff has done so in the past. Thank you.
This is a three-year grant, right?
Three-year, yes.
Chairman.
What's that?
I've, I've noticed, uh, I guess, I, the state has noticed what our sheriff has done and your department and our, our district attorney has done on human trafficking. I'm surprised that, uh, we haven't got more competition from our surrounding counties.
Yeah.
Because you've done, uh, uh, an excellent job. One thing that's been brought up by Supervisor Worthy is, I wanna take this time to say this, is about the role of public safety officers now has changed. It is no longer the Barney Fife role that we used to play about twenty years ago and you had minor crimes. With the targeting of, of law enforcement officers and the risks that our people are taking in public safety, uh, we certainly appreciate, uh, the, the great departments that we do have.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I move approval.
By Supervisor Shida.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Worthy, cast your votes. Vote unanimous, thank you. With Supervisor Cox.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Cox being absent. Okay, we'll move on to item number, uh, twenty-six. Approve the expansion of, uh, commercially sexually exploited children support.
Good morning.
Morning, Juliette.
There we go. Thank you so much. Hi, good morning, board. Um, good morning, Chairman Ennis, members of the board, Mr. Spata and council. Um, my name's Juliette Webb and I'm the Human Services Director and I'm here to talk to you about, today, um, about the commercially sexually exploited children support program. It's interesting that the stars all aligned, um, between the DA, the sheriff, and the Health and Human Services Agency around a common theme today, which is new funding being awarded to our county to support human trafficking. Um, specifically...
Not supporting human trafficking.
Supporting, oh, the fight against human trafficking. Thank you, since this is on the record. Thank you very much for that, Supervisor Worthy. Um, okay, just to let you know, um, in addition to the wonderful work that's been going on with the DA's, uh, human, uh, human trafficking task force that's been looking at human trafficking over the last number of years and providing support services, um, through their victims advocacy programs. It was, it was in September of two thousand and fourteen when the federal government decided that for children, um, commercially sexually exploited children, which is a subset of, of the, the populations that are trafficked. So, these would be children who are specifically trafficked, um, for sex. Um, the federal government realized this was an ever-growing problem in the United States, just as it is throughout the world, and, um, that it is in our best interest to have the child welfare organizations throughout the United States provide services to these clients specifically. In child welfare services, we're always interested or always, we, we by law have to look into caregiver, um, abuse and neglect. Um, we have not gotten involved historically when it comes to perpetrators outside of the family. This changes that for this population specifically. Regardless of who's trafficking, it becomes child welfare's responsibility to ensure that these children are served, um, get the, a comprehensive level of services that we create, uh, we train caregivers who can provide, uh, appropriate, um, homes for children who have gone through this horrific, um, trafficking. So, in January of two thousand and sixteen, California Senate Bill Seven ninety-four then became effective saying, California, this is your law, um, to implement the federal government's preventing sex tra- this is your law to implement the federal government's Preventing Sex Trafficking and Strengthening Families Act." So we started, or I should say, really quick, we started, knowing that this was coming, we started a lot of collaborative work with our sheriffs, with the sheriff, with the DA, with probation, child welfare services, to talk about, okay, what would this look like in Tulare County if we were to be awarded funding? We received $25,000 the first year as a planning grant, which we spent. We actually got a small allocation on, a small adjustment and augmentation on top of that, actually, because our, our activities for planning were, were looked at as being very, very strong in our area. So come November 2016, we applied as well for competitive funding to say, "We've done all this work over the last couple of years to get ourselves ready. Tulare County would like to be competitive in this funding because we believe that we have a definite population of commercially sexually exploited children to serve in this county, as evidenced by recent Operation Babyface." Tulare County was allocated $618,662 from, for one year, from the state of California, specifically for the CSEC purpose. So we went from $25,000 first year to $618,662, which, I think it speaks volumes to the amount of work that goes into our collaborative work that goes in Tulare County. So the program objectives for this commercially sexually exploited children support program will be to coordinate our response with law enforcement agencies and expeditiously help to locate any child or non-minor dependent who is missing from care. For that, we are asking the board to, to allow us to add one FTE investigator, Health and Human Services, who will work as a liaison with all of our law enforcement agencies throughout the county, to provide support for case management activities identified in identified CSEC cases, to conduct screening, to identify children and youth who are at risk, and to document and determine services for children and youth who are victims or at risk of being victims of sex trafficking. For that, we are asking for the addition of three positions, social work positions, to provide service, comprehensive services, and case management services for this population. Another requirement of the California's CSEC counties would be to maintain statistics, formulate interagency protocol developments with multidisciplinary team meetings, which means, again, like a collaborative approach of providers, law enforcement, and child welfare services, trying, sitting together to work on serving these youth, and also to comply with state and federal reporting mandates, because no money comes without lots of reporting mandates. This would necessitate our adding of one FTE staff analyst, three, to complete this work, so we're requesting that. And then, the last staff position we're requesting is a licensed clinical social worker, and that position will be specifically to support the children by direct services who are, who are victims of commercial sexual exploitation. So victims and their caregivers could receive direct care from this licensed clinical social worker, in addition to the fact that we will be using a large portion of this money, bringing an agreement before your board in the near future to provide services through a local community provider who can specialize in these victims. So those are our requests, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this funding or this program or...
Congratulations to the agency.
Thank you.
My, my one question was, this is a one-year grant.
It is.
What happens next year?
Well, we've been given assurances that this money is going to be, going to be allocated once again. We have to meet all the requirements of the program and show that we can do that, and then we should be allocated the same level, if not more, funding next year. However, just as in any request we would bring forward, should the funding not materialize for this, we would be able, we would be able to utilize our realignment funding that we have from the state and federal government to back felony positions with that funding.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
No, I think that's a great program, and again, congratulations to all of our departments who've come up with programs that are effectively assisting this population that are victims and persecuting those who are perpetrators. So with that, I move approval.
Anybody from the audience like to speak to this issue? And on any one of these untimed items, if anyone wants to get up and speak, you're more than welcome to speak. Okay? All right, now I'll bring it back to the board.
Hit a motion in a second.
Motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, second by Supervisor Worthy. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to our timed item. Item number three, general plan adjustment, 2016B Tulare County Health and Safety Element update. Mr. Washam.
Thank you, Chairman Ennis, Supervisors, Mr. CAO, County Council, Mike Washam, Assistant Director, RMA. Today for your consideration is an update to the health and safety element of the general plan. Just a brief presentation overview, talk about the project summary, the proposed update, scope of work that was developed over this course of the last few months, state Board of Forestry and Fire Protection, the public notification process, and the requested action today. In accordance with California Government Code, the health and safety element must be updated prior to the next housing element adoption. Accordingly, the board, your board, on July 19th initiated action to amend the Tulare County General Plan Health and Safety Element. Additionally, the stipulated settlement agreement with the Sierra Club requires that the county review the health and safety element and consider needed updates pursuant to government code, specifically referencing fires and flooding. Within one year of the adoption of the housing element, and no later than March of 2017. The proposed update, the scope of work, what we looked at, we looked at areas vulnerable to fire, wildfire, wildfires, areas for groundwater recharging, define those better with more up-to-date information. We updated the FEMA maps that were utilized in the 2012 general plan. We used the previous version of the FEMA map, so we updated the, the figures to incorporate that. The flood control master plan was reviewed for consistency with, with the safety element policies. There's some cross-referencing between policies and other areas in our codes and ordinances. We updated the fire hazard severity zone maps with new data from the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection. We, we actually mapped historic data on wildfires. We've even included the mapping of, the Cedar Fires included within this mapping. More information regarding the wildfire, fire hazard areas that were available through the USGS, and looked at the threat for areas that are more vulnerable for flooding and landslides after a fire event and when rains come shortly thereafter. We also looked at the general location and distribution of our land use designations and planning areas where structures, roads, and those areas that are under fire threat, and areas more vulnerable to flooding after those wildfires. Added discussion about state, local, federal agencies with responsibility for fire protection, including the special districts and local offices of emergency services. Again, we cross-referenced additional policies with other places in our local ordinances and regulations. We incorporated by reference the county multi-hazard local mitigation, hazard mitigation plan that is currently going through an updating process as we speak. We'll be holding another meeting very soon on that, and we've added a policy regarding climate adaptation and resiliency. We also talked about the tree mortality and removal plan, added some more policies regarding recharge basin consultation process, and regarding development in flood, flood prone areas, and also the allowed, to allow increased public participation in selecting flood control projects, which is something that your board adopted earlier this year. Updated work plan and implementation measures of this, the safety element. Under state government code, the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection is, is to review any updates to safety element before the Board of Supervisors considers adoption. They reviewed the, the proposed update on November 1st, and they've approved it, subject to the revisions that, as we work closely with Cal Fire, the revisions that we put into it was acceptable to that, to them, as well as some of them, some of the policies are more appropriate to the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan that's undergoing, so we've incorporated that by reference into the safety element. Therefore, as that's updated on a regular basis, we don't have to touch our general plan safety element. Public noticing, tribal consultation. SB 18 requires notification anytime you're amending the general plan, that the tribal notification goes out, and recently, AB 52 has stepped that up to anytime there's a neg deck, mitigating neg deck, or EIR prepared, that the tribes are also given an opportunity to consult on the projects. So therefore, this, this, this update, we had 27 tribal contacts that were notified on multiple occasions, no less than three times each, and no tribes had requested any consultation on this project. So with that, that really concludes staff's brief presentation. This is a public hearing, so we would ask that that happen, and then adopt the, the resolution as it's defined. I won't bother reading its two pages of slides as, as in your packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Washam. Any questions from the board?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. This is a tremendous amount of work that's been accomplished, and congratulations to our staff to have done all this work. I don't think there must have been any...
I would, I would like to highlight that Dave Bryant was the focus of getting the, the update to the document, as well as Hector Guerra was our sequo, that performed a miraculous timeline, because when you think that you, that your board authorized this to move forward in July, and here we are in the middle of November with the supplemental EIR, with all of the public notifications, review periods, all of those things, that time crunch is, is very efficient, to say the least.
Excellent, excellent work, and I, and, you know, I mean, this just helps you realize when you make side agreements on the settlement, there are huge impacts, and here's an example of that impact, and yet I do think we will have a better document for it. So congratulations.
Yeah, thanks, guys, for all your hard work. Appreciate it very much. Any other comments, or?
Public.
I know that, that's what I'm closing for.
Yeah, I know.
Give me a chance. There's a public hearing. Anybody wishing to approach the board on this, may do so at this time. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Supervisor Worthy?
I'll second it.
Second by Supervisor Rashida. 4-0 with Supervisor Cox being absent. Okay, now we will move on to item, our untimed items again. Item number 27, approve the office reorganization of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The matter before you, as you've indicated, is a proposed reorganization of the Board of Supervisors, as well as the approval of personnel resolutions. And this agenda item, like the previous agenda item that you have just heard, is another clear and convincing manifestation of the business model that is pursued so excellently by your board and, and staff. Essentially, this proposed agenda item is intended to strengthen the operations and the administration of the board for the purpose of improving and accelerating public service. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would request approval of the reorganization and the personnel items that are before you. Thank you.
Appreciate that, and appreciate your input on this, and I think the reorganization is going to make us much more efficient in the future, and hopefully be able to take care of our constituents, as well as take care of the business within the board. This also, if anybody would like to speak to this item, they may do so at this time. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board.
Move approval.
Moved by Supervisor Rashida?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor Vanderpoel. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous, with Supervisor Cox being absent. Item number 28, authorize 1.5 million in road funds for the Caldwell Avenue interchange.
28 is the JPA with Lynn Moore.
28 is?
Yeah, that's with the Lynn Moore Irrigation District, Lindsey Strathmore, Exeter.
But it says on my deal here, so...
Yeah, my 28 is Caldwell.
Steve, what is your 28? I don't know.
Hey, that, that really doesn't matter, because I'm the chairman, and that's what it says on mine.
Well said.
I'll let Caldwell go first if you'd like.
But we will, no, no, we will go ahead and, and pick up the...
All right. Good morning, Board, CAO. Welcome back, Ms. Belzane. The matter before you today is a request to approve a joint powers agreement. This is furthering the implementation of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act in Tulare County. This particular JPA is between Lynn Moore Irrigation District, Lindsey Strathmore Irrigation District, Exeter Irrigation District, Ivanhoe Irrigation District, Stone Corral Irrigation District, the City of Lindsey, and the county, to form what is being called the East Keweeah Groundwater Sustainability Agency. So this is the third and final GSA to be formed in the Keweeah Sub Basin, and it requires approval by your board of the JPA document, as well as an appointment of a director and an alternate director to the JPA board. The GSA will cover areas in the District One and District Four. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the board? Comments?
No, I, I know that this is also a request to appoint a director and an alternate director, and I think that we probably should take the same path that we took with the last GSA in this area, and that is to appoint the supervisor of District One to be the designated director, and then the alternate to be Supervisor Worthy.
Right, or whoever is elected to the office.
Of, yeah.
Come in, okay.
And I, before you take action, I also needed to mention that this particular GSA is sort of on a fast track to catch up with the other GSAs that have been formed, so their first board meeting is actually tomorrow afternoon at 2:00, so I don't know if that makes a difference or not, but just to let you know.
Hey, anybody wishing to speak to this issue, may do so at this time. Public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Move approval, the, our director for, for this sub-basin will be the District One supervisor, and our alternate will be Supervisor Worthy.
I was walking back to join you guys a little bit too close.
Okay, moved by Supervisor Rashida, second by Supervisor Worthy. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous, with Supervisor Cox being absent. Okay, I renumbered my agenda items. We will move on to item number 29, which will authorize 1.5 million roads funds for Caldwell Avenue Interchange. Ben?
Good morning, Chairman, Board members, Mr. Spata, County Council, Ben Reese, Director of the Resource Management Agency. The request before you today is to authorize the use of one and a half million dollars from the road funds to fund a portion of the project approval environmental document phase for the Caldwell Avenue Interchange at State Route 99. Caltrans would be the lead agency for the project, and they would prepare the necessary environmental documents. They've estimated a total cost of about $2.4 million for this initial phase of the project. The purpose of the project, of course, is to alleviate congestion and improve the safety and operation of the existing interchange. Traffic forecasts prepared by Caltrans engineers indicate that the level of service at this interchange will reach a level of service F by 2023, so it's just around the corner. The project is consistent with the growth expected by Tulare County, the City of Visalia, and the Tulare County Association of Governments, and more importantly, the construction of this project would promote economic development opportunities along the Caldwell Avenue interchange. As you know, we are moving forward with the construction of the Avenue 280 corridor from the interchange to acres, approximately two-mile stretch, so this, the improvement of the interchange would be the next logical step. Caltrans has prepared a project study report, which identifies several alternatives for this project, including a no-build alternative. The, the four build alternatives range in cost from 30 to 50 million dollars in total cost. Now, the challenge with this project is that there has been no funding identified for the construction of this project. Caltrans prepared the project study report in collaboration with TCAG to ultimately program this project into the State Transportation Improvement Program, but as you know, there's funding challenges for state transportation. There are some current transportation packages being considered by the state legislator to address these funding shortfalls. We believe that it's reasonably, reasonable to... We believe that it's reasonably, reasonable to expect that these funding shortfalls will ultimately be resolved. However, it is important to note that if they're not resolved, funding for construction and right-of-way would be challenged moving forward. Considering the economic development opportunities associated with this project, we believe that it's, it's, it's a reasonable risk approach to fund the environmental document phase to get this project going. About a week and a half ago, we had the kickoff event, or the groundbreaking event for the Avenue four sixteen widening project, and Ted Smalling, Executive Director of TCAG, talked about how in the early two thousands, prior to Measure R, the City of Dinuba took this reasonable risk, reasonable risk path approach to get that project going, the widening of Avenue four sixteen. They put up some money to get the project going, and here we are today, getting, you know, within the next eighteen months, that project will be completely constructed, so that initial investment resulted in over fifty million dollars of construction work that will be completed here shortly. And so that's the approach that we believe would be appropriate for the interchange project. Additionally, and with no guarantees, and to the fullest extent possible, we will seek reimbursement of some of these road funds from affected developers, or potentially from TCAG via Measure R. And that concludes my presentation, so if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think Ben said it well, that, you know, it's, it's not this is a new project under Measure R, but it's a question of timing. When do you get to these projects? And if people put money into a project, it has the ability to advance the project. In the case of Avenue four sixteen, it advanced the project probably by ten or fifteen years. And I'm not sure where this one fit on the schedule, but by putting money into the pot, we can move this project ahead of other projects essentially across the county, but that's how, that's how it's played. And then if we figure that's a good, good bargain of exchange for us in terms of investment opportunity and return to the county, then I believe that's the appropriate thing for us to do, and I concur with staff's recommendation.
And Ben, would you just, you mentioned in the early two thousands was when the City of Dinuba stepped up and put in money for the four sixteen widening, and here we are fifteen years later that it's being constructed over the next eighteen months. So from the time you begin the process of environmental to go to the actual use of the road, could be fifteen years? Is that true here necessarily, or is it all really going to be dependent upon the fix to the step?
It'll be, I mean, of course, dependent on the fix. We'd be looking to try to get this interchange constructed, you know, by 2023, if at all possible, depending, of course, on the funding, so.
Yeah, I think it's important to point out that, that when you move a project, advance it on the project, you're also advancing the entire thing. So it's the planning of it, it's the right-of-way acquisition, so like in talking about four sixteen, we're still constructing that, but actually, the project began ten years ago, I would think, somewhere close to that, in terms of that very, that process. So you advance the entire process. If you didn't do this, then in your say, well, we're, it comes up, you know, on the regular schedule, you're gaining a lot of ground, because you start from scratch in either case.
I was just kind of curious what the timeline would look like in this specific case.
Right, and I mean, so if you look at Dinuba, the final phase is at this point being constructed, but the actual construction has, you know, began in Dinuba two and a half years ago. So it, the project's been moving along, and for road construction, it's moving along rather quickly.
Well, I think, thank God for Measure R, too, and being able to have some match money to make these things happen, but the big winners are the people that live in Tulare County, because every time we improve a main artery, everybody benefits a lot of great deal.
I know that we are blessed with our Executive Director of TCAG, Mr. Theodore Smalling. I don't know if he had any comments, Mr. Chair, or not.
Hope he'd like to, and anybody else from the public which would like to comment may do so, too.
I mean, he came all the way over here from his office, so I bet he might want to speak.
Then I bet he walked.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ted Smalling, Director Tulare County Association of Governments. I think Ben said all those key points. We have to take reasonable risk. CAO and I spent quite a bit of time talking about this. The time is now to build an interchange in 2025. I know that sounds crazy, but all of you have seen how that works. So if we want to build something in the mid 2020s, we have to start today. And so if, I appreciate the CAO's willing to step up with this recommendation. This has turned out to be difficult in other areas to put this kind of money up. Dinuba did it over a decade ago, and you can't get to construction if you don't do environmental. And so I think this is a, this is a great opportunity. We're going to be at risk. You'll be at risk one point five, we'll be at risk a million or so, but to, for me, as recommending to the board in a month, there's a greater risk of doing nothing. And so we've done this before, TCAG has, for the past decade, and so we'll, staff will be recommending we move forth this partnership in a few weeks in December.
Spata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ben Ruiz, I can't thank the Executive Director of TCAG enough with respect to his cooperation and his strategic vision to try to remove obstacles and help this county get things done. That's why we're stepping up and recommending an allocation of over one million dollars to demonstrate our seriousness to get things done in that Caldwell and ninety-nine area. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public wish to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Supervisor Wordley.
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous with Supervisor Cox being absent. Thank you, Ted, for your input. Appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to item number thirty, Report of the Transit Operations and Maintenance Facility Project Ad-Hoc Committee.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Mr. CAO, County Council. My name is Ross Miller. I'm an engineer with the Resource Management Agency, and I'm here to present the findings and direction that was provided by the TUMF Ad-Hoc Committee, which your board established a little while back. The presentation is kind of dense, but I will try to be as brief as possible to get through it. There's a bit of an overview. The Transit Operations Maintenance Facility is part of the central road yard master plan, and part of the committee's role was to look at coordination with the other facilities there, which also included the second item, which was looking at the utilities and a proposed cost-sharing idea between the utilities, since the transit funds funding the TUMF can't be used for utilities of other departments. Then I will also briefly talk about the well project for the central road yard, since that has been separated into a different project. I will talk about the building type selection for the maintenance building and the operations building. I will show a site plan for the project. I will show some architectural renderings and views and floor plans. Then I will go through some acknowledgements, the current requests, and comments, questions, and discussions on this project. So the image here shows the master plan for the central road yard. There's already a number of existing facilities and departments located on the site, the largest being the Roads Department of RMA. There's also Motor Pool located there, Animal Control Facility, and the Ag Commissioner. Currently, the TUMF project is being developed, as is the fire station. There's also fire training, which is on the near horizon, and the original master plan approved in 2012 included a fire admin building, a fire warehouse, and a nine-one-one center. However, these kind of became, those three facilities kind of went up in the air after the purchase of Cigna, but it was the committee's recommendation that we plan for similarly-sized buildings with similar use types, as, so that is the direction we have taken. There's also, as we said before, the master plan included the centralization and combination of utilities between the existing and future facilities in order to have centralized handling and minimize costs and economies of scale to handle the water, wastewater, storm water. We also discussed telecommunications for this project, as well as an access road for the future facilities. As part of the coordination, the committee recommended that the seepage pits, which handle wastewater, be sized for the existing and planned facilities, that the sanitary sewer lines, which were going in for the TUMF, also be sized to accommodate the fire station and the other facilities, the other future facilities on the southern portion of the site, and that, you know, efforts be taken to facilitate the connection of the future facilities to save costs down the road and not to have to cut and patch any road or anything of the sort. They also decided at this time that the wastewater would not be connected to the existing facilities, but that would come in the near future, or as a future project, sorry. We also looked at the water, which included the well, the water mains, storage tanks, and connection to the existing facility. I will discuss that a bit more later, but essentially, if those weren't sized for the full size, they would have to come back as a separate project and essentially redo the work, so their recommendation was to size these for everyone accordingly. There's a retention basin, which is shown on the southern portion of that site, and that was to be sized for the existing and the planned facilities. That was scalable. It's essentially, you know, you dig a hole, or you dig a larger hole for other facilities. And then there are also storm lines that were going in on the south side for the existing and future facilities, and like the wastewater, this was to be designed for the TUMF, the fire station, fire training, as well as the other unnamed facilities at this time, and efforts were to be taken to easily accommodate those future facilities. There was also a discussion regarding telecommunications. High-speed internet lines are being brought into, I believe, Motor Pool at the central road yard at the moment, and the committee recommended a design to expand the telecommunications to the other facilities at the central road yard, which don't currently have it, as well as make sure that, as that's brought to the TUMF, it will be able to be expanded cheaply to the other facilities and the fire station. We also talked about the access road, which is going on the south portion as well, which will be constructed to accommodate the fire station and to the length to accommodate the TUMF at this time. As part of this, we, the committee tentatively approved a cost-sharing mechanism for the various items. I'll try to get through this as quickly as I can. The seepage pits were to be divided roughly, are equally between all the things, are all the facilities, because all of them have similar levels of waste generation, or at least wastewater generation. The sanitary sewer line was to be split between the fire training, the fire station, and transit. Transit paying the most because of the additional length of pipe required to serve the facility. The water system was to be divided based on, water, the storage tank, and the water mains were to be divided based on the use requirements of the facilities in terms of their water requirements. The transit, the fire station, fire training, all requiring fire flow, so their numbers may appear inflated. Then there was also a connection from the future facilities up to the existing facilities, which would then be split between the existing facilities in order to expedite that connection. The retention basin was sized and the cost distributed between the facilities based on, the recommendation was based on the impervious area attributable to each use of the facility. So essentially, the more storm water you generate, the more the pit has to be dug out, the more you would pay for that. The storm lines were, as was similar with the, sorry, sanitary lines, the TUMF requires extra lines, and then the remainder of it was to be split between the facilities based on the generation of storm water. There was also an outlet structure between the existing, it's sort of a ditch along the south end of the central road yard, which collects the water. At this time, if that fills up in a heavy storm, it will just spill onto the south side, so the storm outlet structure is just a outlet structure to take the water from that ditch and move it into the retention basin that's being constructed, so we don't have to worry about the fire station or the TUMF or any of the other projects down there flooding. And then the access road, the, was split between the fire station and transit, with transit paying according to the fact that, A, they need a longer road, and B, they'll have slightly more use of it. The well project for the central road yard was separated out into a separate project, which is being led by Capital Projects. This is a result of the potentially demand issues being faced by the road at the central road yard. It's running low on water, so the idea is that we're fast-tracking this project so there won't be any, any interruption in the service for the water for all of the facilities there. It's currently in the advertising phase. Another direction we received from the committee and from the board during our, the formation of this committee, was to review building types and other options in order to reduce capital costs so that we could include the operations building within this portion. In doing that, we looked at the maintenance building, and in addition to the previous option, we looked at five other options. The committee's recommendation was a pre-engineered metal building, which represents the lowest capital outlay at this time. Without going too much into detail, it's, may have some maintenance costs down the road, but the committee decided that it was, those risks were lower than the capital outlay. So that was the recommendation, which results in a roughly seven hundred thousand dollar savings, most of which can then go to the operations building. We looked at four different building types here, and the recommendation was a wood frame building with stucco walls. The price presented to the committee included asphalt shingle roof, but the committee recommended we looked into an upgraded roof system. And further, their committee recommended that there may be additional cost savings if some of the components which were previously shown in the maintenance building be moved to the operations building, because it's more compatible with this construction type. This plus changes in the assumptions that went into the utilities, budgeting for our project, allow this to be constructed within our current nine million dollar construction budget. So here's just a general site plan for the current project as it stands after the TUMF ad-hoc committee meetings. We have, yeah, a maintenance building shown in this area, with the operations building shown just south of that. We have bus parking adequate for twenty-four buses, more than enough for the current time, especially considering the number of buses we don't park onsite in order to accommodate, you know, our routes in Dinuba and Porterville and elsewhere. The bus parking will also include CNG slow fill, which basically fill the buses with gas overnight. It also includes public parking, the access road, and I don't show all of the utilities onsite, but that's because it would just dwarf and would not look proper on this item. The CNG facility, there has been some issue that was risen that Caltrans may potentially lose their delegation to do environmental documentation for federal government, and the CNG portion is being funded under that. If that were to happen, we could either make up the difference using LTF funds, or we may be able to find additional funding from either the California Energy Commission or the Sanmack, our Sanmack and Valley Air Pollution Control Board, both of which offer fairly frequent CNG grants. But our local agents with Caltrans do not expect this to be a problem, and we've been working with them as closely as possible to make sure that, even if there is, we will try to get this approved before they lose their delegation. Another thing, this project has been planned, so in the future, we can come in and out of fast fill, and as I said, there's additional funding that may be available from either the Air Pollution Control Board, or California Energy Commission, or potentially other sources to add this in the future, but it's not a necessary component for the fleet at this time. The CNG, the slow fill is not either, but both of them are good items to have built in. Facility has also been planned for the long term to accommodate the expansion of the maintenance building and addition of additional maintenance bays. It's prudent not to add those at this time, because as fueling types and transit fleets change, it may be better to add additional bays, which are designed to accommodate whatever changes the fleet undergoes. As well, we're showing significant additions of parking, and part of the reason for not adding that at this time is, A, cost savings, and B, a recognition that the fueling infrastructure may change over time, so not paving the area gives us the maximum flexibility. This also includes the addition of like a lube station and vacuum island, neither of which are prudent or useful. which are prudent or useful at our current size of fleet, but as we expand, may become more useful and more viable. Here's a brief floor plan of the maintenance building. We have three maintenance bays. Additional maintenance bays would be expanded towards what's the top here. As a note, the facing left would be north here. There's a tire shop and storage area, there's part storage below that, both of which have exterior entrances for deliveries. There's a shop area towards what's the bottom left of this building here, Maintenance Manager Building, this is our Maintenance Manager's office. This is where, you know, most of the repairs that aren't done to the bus in the bay would occur, electronic repair, tool storage, things like that. These three maintenance bays, which are more than adequate for our current size of fleet, one of which would probably be used for tires and fluids and stuff, one of which would be used for small repairs, and one of which would be used for major repairs, like replacing an engine or something. As I said before, we added various, previously, we're showing some bathrooms in these components on the left here. As part of the maintenance building, there's likely cost savings by moving them over to the operations building, which is also more compatible. And this, essentially for the price shown, was kind of a bare-bones building with an open floor plan and minimal finishings. If we come in under budget, as we expect that the current estimate for the project is on the very conservative side, we've requested that when we go to bid, we'll have add alternatives to add some of the internal finishing to this, but an open floor plan would also be acceptable. Here are some just architectural renderings. The color scheme, you know, is definitely up for debate at this time. On the left, you can see the operations building, and on the right, you can see the exterior of the maintenance building. And here's just some isometric views, showing sort of a more bird's-eye approach to the facility, this one coming from above Road 140, facing to the southeast, and this one being from onsite, facing to the northwest. We'd like to thank the Supervisor Vanderpoel and Supervisor Cox for their attendant, for their service on the ad hoc committee. We'd also like to thank the other individuals who attended this meeting. We had representatives from the HHSA, we had representatives from the Ag Commissioner, from other departments at RMA, from Motor Pool, from Capital Projects, from the Fire Department, and from the CAO's office, all in attendance at these meetings. We'd also like to thank the Board of Supervisors for their direction at the last meetings establishing the ad hoc committee, the CAO's office for their general help and guidance on this project overall, our design team led by Arrington Watkins Architects, MB Transportation, our contract operator, for their help and guidance, providing an operator's perspective as we designed this, our transit consultant, Ellen Moy, and the RMA staff in general. With that, the present request was to receive a report, which you guys have, and to ratify the findings and decisions of the ad hoc project review committee for the TMF. And now, if there are any comments, questions, or discussions, we'd like to hear them.
Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Just a few comments, you know, this was a, again, a great process. I think that the ad hoc committee, and if Supervisor Cox were here, he would talk for a long time about how great he is, I mean, the ad hoc committee, but it really did a great job. What we originally were looking at with this project was just getting the maintenance building built, and we were going to be bringing out a modular building to use as a temporary office facility. So we would incur the costs of a temporary building, outfitting that, and then ultimately we were going to have to build the maintenance, or, I'm sorry, the operations building eventually anyways. And so with the savings from changing the building type, we're now able to get a lot more accomplished, the operations building actually built at the same time as the maintenance building, and I think we are going to get a much better project. It's definitely more aesthetically pleasing than seeing a modular building out there again, too, and I just think this is a great achievement on behalf of the county, and it's great for the transit, and I think that we can also look to the future to maybe turn this into a revenue-generating opportunity onsite, with the CNG facility being right there as well. With that, that's all I had.
I really thought this was well thought out. I appreciate the idea of building infrastructure, so that you don't have to come back later on, and so often you can get so much done, and there's a little investment made now, for instance, digging a larger seepage pit than you would need overall, but while the equipment's there and doing the work and so forth makes a lot of sense, sizing pipes and plumbing and electrical to accommodate future growth is very wise, I think, use of money. The one thing I was going to ask you about is that, in the allocation of funding cost, were all the other agencies associated, were they also consulted with that, so the Fire Department, Animal Control, Road Department, everybody, everybody's on board with these these cost allocations?
They were all on the ad hoc committee, and the representatives that were there were definitely of the level to where they could make those commitments and be okay with that, so, and appreciate them being involved in the process, too.
Yeah, and I, I think this was a great process, and it also shows the benefits of shared expenses, so we can build more, accommodating more different people across the spectrum of needs of the county, so we're getting a good bang for our buck here by co-locating different facilities on the one site, taking advantage of one well, for instance, that sort of thing. So, great process, and I want to thank the ad hoc committee, they already thanked themselves, but we will thank them also for the work well done, and for all of the staff that were engaged in this process. I think it was a very good team effort, so congratulations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to echo the comments of Supervisor Worthy, this ad hoc committee process was an opportunity, an excellent opportunity to get collaboration across the departments, and the fiscal dimension of it. The budgetary dimension was well thought out, and I believe equitably allocated, so we can get this project moving and financed, so we appreciate that, and this is another example of how the ad hoc process is working.
Lot of hard, lot of hard work and thinking went into this, and it's, it shows that the county attorney is trying to be as good as they can be and get these projects done, and in a timely manner, so, great deal. Would you like to say something?
I have a question on the square foot cost of the different scenarios that you put in, put out, from $181 to $220 a square foot. Is this, when I see figures that high, I'm going to say, is this a result of prevailing wages, or why is the cost so high? And it just shows that when we bought the Signet building, you can knock out a couple walls for $80 a square foot compared to building this type of building. So I'm asking the ad hoc committee member on these cost estimates per square foot.
Yeah, and that's, labor's a very significant cost in building the facility, and you should have seen what we were looking at on the maintenance facility first. We were going to end up with the Taj Mahal of all maintenance facilities, that was probably going to be on the architectural firms, the front of their booklet they handed out as marketing material. And now we're going to have a great facility, that's going to be very much serving the purpose, but it's a little bit more in line with our budget, but you're right, you, when we first looked at the cost per square foot, it was $390 a square foot for the maintenance facility. We got it down to 310, but that's still a high construction cost for a metal building, and I definitely think that the labor's going to be the biggest cost component there.
To show you what a steel that the Signet building is.
And that's, and your point right there, steel in a different sense, but the cost of materials has risen significantly, and we're seeing that on the property and evidence facility, too, and that accounts for a big increase in the cost as well.
Was there any thought, maybe in the future, now, I'm just kind of speculating, about electric buses? Is there, has there been any thought put into that, and if that happens, we would have to do something different, or charging systems, or?
That was part of the reason that we're only paving roughly half of the bus parking area at this time, so if hybrids, our plug-in hybrids, our electric buses were to take over, we'd be able to more easily accommodate that fueling infrastructure with the unpaved portion of the site at the moment.
Anybody in the public like to speak to this issue? I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd gladly move for approval of this item.
By Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Worthy. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous, with Supervisor Cox being absent. Thank you, thank you everyone for your hard work in the ad hoc committee.
I'm going to tell him about your compliment. He's super, too? He's a super Cox?
Yeah, that's nice.
Some people think that Uber may take away from the need for public transportation altogether in the future.
Okay, we will move on to letter to Edison International, Southern California Edison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. The matter before you today puts our business model to the test. This involves the Avenue 280 widening project, which appears to be put at risk right now. The proposed letter that the CEO of SCE expresses the county's disappointment, our serious disappointment, with respect to intolerable delays concerning pole relocation for the Avenue 280 road project. However, the proposed action, or the proposed letter, also represents a call to action, and if the utility company continues to be non-responsive, the letter indicates that the matter has been referred to our county council to execute the litigation option. Nonetheless, recognizing the goodwill that we attempt to maintain, the proposed letter extends an olive branch. And I'm thinking, Mr. Chairman, as we just heard the very successful agenda item with respect to the ad hoc committee, we may want to consider establishing an ad hoc committee with regard to this item, bringing all the parties, and to see just exactly how accountable they are. In terms of background, the Avenue 280 project is a four-lane project with a raised center median, and that's important, as we're going to see later, a raised center median. It is intended to improve traffic safety, to facilitate economic development and associated commerce for the county and a number of key cities. It will promote major development on the east side and the west side of the proposed Caldwell and 99 interchange. We believe that the right-of-way process was complete, so we thought. We believe that there was agreement with regard to the number of poles that would be financed, or so we thought. We believe that the easement language, after being vetted, was resolved, so we thought. We also believe that there was a reasonable degree of certainty with regard to the Public Utilities Commission process, so we thought, and after being given a range of three months to three years, that's not a manifestation of a business model. The major problem here is that we have a lack of a business attitude to getting things done. In other words, there appears to be a collision now between the business model, that we are open for business, and a bureaucratic approach to getting things done. What we need here is a business commitment to excellence. It's what we don't have. This slide here demonstrates the costs to do the relocation. The total is, at the bottom, $2.5 million. There are 26 poles, 19 appear to be undisputed, for a total of 1.5 million, almost 1.6, but now we see there's a dispute with regard to approximately seven poles, for which the company may not be willing to step up, but we're going to step up, and we're going to fund those poles, to make sure that this process does not put this serious project in jeopardy. The proposed letter before you is an attempt to try to resolve something that has been very important to this county, and that is to try to help the public, to serve the public interest, to improve traffic safety, and to try to promote jobs. However, there's a potential nightmare scenario if we sit back and do nothing. This is an example of the work of the utility company and the city of Isalia. You will notice the raised median. This is Riggin and Acres. You will see, they went forward and built the project, and the utility poles have not been moved. And so, as a result of a project, a construction project being completed to try to help the public and an associated school, they have to close the lanes. That is gross inefficiency. Next slide. Here's an example of the same road, the poles in the middle, where they have installed barrels and protective medians, so that there aren't fatalities or serious injuries on this roadway. Next slide, please. And this is the example. A completed project that is a failure performance, but the city couldn't wait. They had to move forward, and this is the scenario that we face if we do nothing. Accordingly, this letter is designed to send a message, that we are serious about getting things done. And so even though we are saying that we are prepared to launch litigation, we want to give them another chance, to see if they will step up and help us in order to try to protect the public and not be a barrier to the public interest. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully recommend that the board approve this letter and see where we go. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest one addition to the letter? In the paragraph dealing with referral to my office, it references the franchise agreement between the parties, and I think at the end of that sentence, we should add, "and any other applicable law," because that is, in fact, what we will be doing.
Thank you.
Discussion from the board?
Sure, I was just going to say that I appreciate the CEO's effort to try to move this project along. It is, it is a bit surprising to me and disconcerting, because we've always had, I felt, a very good relationship with Southern California Edison in terms of our projects, and we've worked together to help one another in various ways, whether it was a road project, or putting in a cross-loop system, and we've been engaged with the company for many, many years. I mean, they have their origins here in Tulare County, and we've had this great relationship with them. In fact, I've often, most of my district lately actually is within the PG&E electrical system, and have normally looked at Edison and say, I wish PG&E could act as quickly as Edison has. So it's been, it's been a disappointment here, and I hope, I might, and I guess I really want to say, I hope at the outcome of this, that we will be able to move this project forward expeditiously and appropriately, because as was pointed out, that is gross inefficiencies to build something out, then you can't even use it, because you've got the power lines running down the middle of a lane, so hopefully we can avoid that by this process, and appreciate being proactive in the way we are to try to move this thing forward. I certainly support the letter with the modifications suggested by staff, by our county council.
Yeah, it's kind of sad that we have to get to this point, to where we have to do something like this. I think we've worked with Edison Company over the years. But, we've got a project that's this important. Anybody in the public like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, this is an example where the old adage in real estate, "As time is money," you know, I think that's what we're looking at here in this situation. We want to resolve this issue before we bring legal counsel into the mix, and if, you know, once we get the legal counsel, it takes considerable amount of more time, but we're not afraid to go to that route to start the dialogue, so with that, we'll approve.
With the modification?
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Sheed, a second by Supervisor Worthy. Cast your votes. The vote's unanimous with Supervisor Cox not being present.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add that we will, in response to Supervisor Sheed's comment about the laws... comment about the law as delay, in addition to looking at something that caused the intervention of the court to move things forward, we will also look at the possibility of moving forward and seeking damages after, after the fact, so that we don't have to slow things down.
Well, that's why I brought up the issue, "The time is money," as damages.
Okay, that closes the open session of our board meeting today. Thank you all for being here. Counsel, we have need for closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. Excuse me. We have items, excuse me, A through F on your board's agenda and addenda, and I do not anticipate any announcements.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for being here.